Planning board meeting of December eleventh, call to order, Ms. Creighton.
Here.
Mr. Lucio. Yeah, Mr. Only there, Mr. Filbert.
I didn't say here, but I'm here.
Thank you, looks like we have a quorum, like to remind all board members, yes, to be recognized by the chair if you wish to speak. And this meeting is being recorded. Uh, first item on the agenda is acknowledgement of correspondence. Yeah, I think we already acknowledged I have only eleven twenty-five letter, but I will reacknowledge it and a letter from eleven thirty.
Yes, questions on that? Are we responding to correspondence? We don't discuss them in the meeting, but are we responding as somebody from the planning?
When a correspondence is sent to like twenty people, I mean, I don't know who responds. It wasn't anything specific to the planning board, it was just to a lot of different people, so.
I'm just wondering, yes, if, I mean, it's sent to the planning board. I would assume, so we know about it, so I'm just wondering who responds and if we get their response to know what they're saying.
Nobody, nobody in town hall responds to emails, it's forwarded to the board, that's your correspondence, not ours.
You're talking about specifically the board responding to.
Correct, I'm asking because it goes to Concom and um, planning board health, and so I'm just wondering if any of the boards actually respond.
Yeah, that I don't know. Um, at this time, I will allow public comments on any items not on the agenda with a limited amount of time, anybody from the public wish to speak to the board? Okay, the first item on our agenda is uh, eight flat, an A and R for eight Flatley Avenue, Manchester Village Properties. Adam Zager, Zager is representing the client. On this, do you give us a brief explanation of what?
The subject property is eight Flatley Avenue. Forty-nine thirty-one on the Manchester Tax Assessor's map. Paired by two way selling. So back in this one. The applicant is proposing to divide the property uh, to lots, the existing lot is roughly forty-four thousand square feet. That we have extended to school street. We've got two lots that we, the proposed area, frontage requirements, we have the first proposed lot A, which is going to be fifteen thousand five hundred and one square feet, six thousand square feet required. Uh, lot B is going to be fifteen thousand eight hundred and forty-eight square feet, again, uh, six thousand square feet required. The total frontage of both lots. You can see is hundred and thirty-five twenty-nine, so what they done is divided it into the two sections, uh, the first lot, uh, lot B will have frontage of seventy-five point two eight feet. Starting at this corner, um, number four Flatley Avenue curves around to the property line here. And lot A will then have sixty feet of frontage from its corner here to the boundary of lot B. Uh, so both meet the requirements of the area and frontage uh, under the zoning bylaw. And just to note, we've also left twenty feet here at the corner for a driveway to serve lot A, which should uh, help the building inspector look at that. Confirm that's adequate, um, Flatley's been recently paved, it's all there, it's adequate for access, we've got to turn around. Um, and we think it's a relatively straightforward plan. Happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Any questions from the board, Mr. Only?
So, um, Adam, uh, is there going to be an easement for lot B to cross the property?
Well, I don't think that's going to be necessary, because lot B can have access directly from Flatley here. I, I, I'm, I don't think the final location as per driveway has been determined, but it's got plenty of room on Flatley on cul-de-sac for a direct driveway itself. And so I imagine there'll be a separate driveway that goes to lot A and serves lot A, it could be that, that the applicant wants to do a common driveway, but I think that would get finalized uh, when the development plans are actually submitted and prepared.
So you answered my second question, so that's great, uh, so there's a garage showing for one day, so we maybe they go turn around and use the back of the garage for, for the entrance door or something?
Garage, um, well, this garage is on lot B.
B, yeah.
I mean, that, that, this is designed so that it can stay, this house could stay as part of the development scheme and be just served, yeah, it potentially, I think.
But there'd be an easement across lot A's driveway, you get into.
If that were the final development scheme, we'd have to do that, but I think that's yet to be determined. My client's ill tonight, but he's on Zoom, he could speak to this if he wanted to, but uh, I, I think it's still to be finalized. The architectural is a grown up.
Any uh, questions from the board, Mary?
Can you tell me what the width is from the street? To the, um, I guess in front of the garage, so you've got, what's the width from the street to the other property line?
The which?
So with the narrowest point, what's the width?
The lot width, the lot width would be, um.
No, no, just from the street, so you've got kind of a, um, loop, I don't know what you call it, as you know. And so I'm trying to figure out, so you've got a narrow spot here from the street to lot B property line.
This distance here is twenty-three feet, so it narrows down, so it looks like it can probably be, you know, roughly fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet?
I'm, I'm underestimating from the scale and, and the uh, and the fact that this line is twenty-three feet, so here's twenty, so you know, you look, you look to be you know, roughly fifteen feet, maybe slightly less.
So, and then the, you said that the width, the actual width of where a, the driveway would go is twenty?
Twenty feet here, right here, you can see that there's twenty feet left between the corner of five Flatley and the lot line of number eight, so we left that twenty-foot area for driveway, which should be more than adequate for a building inspector.
Yeah, I mean, my concern is that, looking at some um, case law and I, I, there was an Antucket case Gifford versus the Antucket Planning Board and there was an extreme case where they tried to keep funneling driveways onto one public way, but this is kind of doing that with one, and um, I'm not clear that that is safe enough access. And setback, setback and frontage to constitute usable, um, adequate frontage.
Well, again, uh, we, with respect to lot B?
Uh, no, with respect to lot A.
Well, lot A has twenty feet right here, unobstructed to drive straight through from Black, from, from Flatley Ave, from the cul-de-sac.
Right, but our frontage requirement for D is sixty feet, and I know you're getting it from doing that kind of you know, whatever, to call it, triangle or whatever.
I think the case law you're referring to was case law where they try to make these odd triangles to
Yeah.
I don't think this is anything that approaches that, this is, you've got direct actual access from a public way or from a private way, with twenty feet of width directly onto the lot, so.
Right, and I prefaced it by saying, it, it's not the same, but when the decision was written, it's that same type of thing where it's trying to create frontage that's really not there, and so I'm just saying that's my concern with this, it's it's not um, usable frontage and uh, or um, it's not the right word, but it's it's created frontage that's not there, is basically.
Well, thus the frontage is right there.
I know, I understand, I'm just saying to me, it's not, it's created frontage that's not really fronting on the street, you're creating that.
Well, I just respectfully disagree, I mean, the street is Flatley Ave, it's a cul-de-sac. And you have rented, a lot does front on the street, so then we, there could be, you know, access, these are going to be on the driveway, fact is, you have adequate access, it's there on the ground, it's paved, you've got to turn around, um, that offers, you know, a twenty-foot driveway, you're actually in a lot, so our view would be this is not to use at all. In ultimate, there'll be a final development plan that would have, the driveway may or may not be like this, but uh, certainly this frontage on a private way.
Um, just for the board's information, I think I sent this to you, I had asked the, the building inspector to weigh in on this. Um, I was listening to come tonight, but he did, did I put that in your packet, said that uh, this plan is compliant with current zoning tracks.
Did he give specific?
Well, actually, he did, uh, I asked in response, I asked him if it uh, met the minimum lot width. And at first I didn't understand what he said, but he referred to the lot width definition. I think, and said it does, because that was my concern, which is essentially another statement, a state restating, I think of your concern of this workshop, uh, and lot width is the distance between the side property lines of a lot, measured parallel to the front property line. And measured at a location of the front property line setback. So, that would mean that the width is the same as the frontage in this case, despite the fact that the, that the lot, if you turned it sideways, if it was, if it was the distance between the front and the back the side lot lines, that, that's the, um, but we do not regulate that lot depth. Which would be the shortest point, we only made, we only require um, lot width, and that needs to be fifty feet. So I, um.
You usually hit that if you measure it at any point in the lot, really.
Well, no, it's along the frontage. But the front, yeah, you have, we have more than just side and front and back lot lines, you have this of this other property line, and it butts the existing drawing number five. So that is my first concern, but I now, in thinking about it, have to agree that the building inspector has thought about that, the other question that I had, and I drove down there, is that the I, I first thought that this was a town road, but it's not, it's a private way. And the assessor's maps do show that bump out as part of the parcel that is the way. And so therefore, I think it, whether we like it or not, it's not a good question, I think it meets the um, requirements for frontage.
We did, I have the email, we did confirm with the town clerk.
Yeah, I, I'm not even worried about whether it's private or public, actually, if, if, now that I know it's private, um, except that it was recently paved. So when I thought it was town, I was like, how did that get paved, but now that I understand it's a private way, um, the frontage is, the pavement is now, despite the fact that on your assessor's map, it does not show is paved, it is on the ground, that entire little cul-de-sac thing is paved. So it seems to me it's qualifies as frontage.
Can I remind the board that we, whether or not these lots comply with zoning is irrelevant? The only thing we can judge this on is whether there's sufficient frontage to gain
An area.
regular access to both these properties, and they're clear views, and I think it's a and, and of course, we put on the plan that this is no guarantee that the zoning is compliant. So when he goes to get a building permit, now these are building inspectors' uh, job to determine whether or not, uh, the lots are zoning accordance.
Yeah, I have a question, I'm just trying to understand lot A and the configuration of it, can you just sort of trace that? Handle on the frying pan is part of lot A. And is there any, so the twenty-foot uh, dimensional access that you have, that's at an angle, right? Is there any requirement that that clearance be uh, parallel to the front, to the, to the road that you're accessing?
Not that, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, and is there any um, depth requirement, if you will, for the frontage piece that you're gaining access from? Looks like it's something less than twenty feet. And that satisfies the, the tail as well?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board upon A and R?
Ron, it's Christine, I have a question. So I just when you say this was recently paved, what was, I mean, I'm familiar with the property. And I mean, what I know of what was recently paved was brass and a tree. So are you saying that the road was recently paved, or the property was recently played, paved, I'm sorry? Could you clarify that?
We have cul-de-sac was recently paved, we didn't, we didn't hear any question about whether it is adequate access, it's grass, it's dirt. Having reached the private way, we paved it as, as any private way owner might want to do.
So you're saying that what is, was recently paved was part of the public way, or that was part of a yard, I'm just trying to?
Part of Flatley Avenue. If you look to the nineteen in nineteen sixty-seven. I don't know if you can see, but the cul-de-sac was created and approved. Um, it was January of nineteen sixty-seven, then again in um, August of sixty-seven, when the sewer was implemented, but this isn't, there's nothing new here, it's just paving an area.
Okay, but I think, I'm sorry, Ron, may I go, my ass follow up? But I think that pavement now goes all, all the way back to the property line, am I mistaken?
The pavement, all the way to go, the pavement, the pavement, the paving ends. You can see the cul-de-sac here. Some of the paving goes, the, the paving is shown on the, on the proposed subdivision plan. Um, you can see that it goes, it goes into the driveway, but the road does not extend all the way back to the rear property line, it's just.
I'm sorry, to the left, to the left.
To the left, this cul-de-sac here.
Known the property a few months ago, one just never cul-de-sac, it was grass, so, um, I guess we're calling it a cul-de-sac now, I just, the end of a driveway was, end of a private road was a cul-de-sac, um. So that's a public way, or is that part of the private?
The, the private way, it's part of Flatley Avenue, as, as shown on the, the plan.
So who, so who owns the cul-de-sac?
Excuse me?
Christina, go ahead.
So I'm just, I understand it's a private way, but who is that private, that part of, that was recently paved, who is that deeded to, was it deeded to the owner that you're representing, or is it?
It would be, it's owned to the, actually, the, it, it's, it's just subject to the Massachusetts Private Way statute, it, it, all of the owners have right rights to the midway point of the private way.
Oh, that's what I was, I was curious if it was.
And, and, and any owner on Flatley could maintain any portion of the private ways, they're right as owners of the private way, any private way owner can maintain all down the width of the private way, not just the area in front of its prop.
So who actually paved this piece of the property?
The applicant.
The, like a organ, like a Flatley Avenue organization or homeowner or road owner?
There is no road organization, it's, it, it's just a typical common law private way that's owned by all the butters. You know, each owning fee to the center line, but all of them having the right to use and maintain it for its entire width, entire length, uh, they can all rent utilities, they can all access it, they can all maintain it.
So I guess maybe you broke up, who, who actually paved it?
The applicant.
You, you broke up again, I'm sorry, we just have a bad connection. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, I'm sorry, I'm just having trouble hearing you.
Okay, um, any other questions, um? Mr. Zager informed me that there are some changes on my, on this plan.
We made a, we made a
Were we vote on anything?
We made a few technical corrections to from my LAR, um, that I can point out, I've got a revised Mylar here for you. We changed the, the owner from Cedar Hill to the actual owner. What would happen is, in, in the, when we were reviewing for the, for the meetings tonight, we went through the application requirements, uh, so the owner of record is now listed as Manchester Manchester Village Properties LLC. And then we also added seven signature lines and then corrected the certification uh, to match exactly what's on the town's application. And then he also indicated that it's not in a flood dis, it's not in a flood plans at district or uh, water resources protection districts. So they're all just, we thought they might be comments that the board would have raised, so we figured we just adjusted my luck.
Okay, um, what have any issues with the adjustments?
I think, uh, make a motion to endorse the plan of land at eight Flatley Avenue, Manchester by the sea, uh, prepared for Manchester Village Properties LLC. Uh, assessor's map forty-nine, parcel thirty-one. Dated twelve, seven, twenty-three.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Ron, I think we typically give it a number, do we know what number we're at?
Um, well, Gail has told me otherwise, um. Gail, do you have a number, um, I think we've done, I think that policy has changed.
I don't think we've changed the policy, we've always used the number.
We are now filing, we are now filing A and Rs by address as all other documents in town hall are filed.
Is that in our new rules and regulations?
No, it was a standard that unfortunately did not exist for the planning board. But it is now a standard for the planning board, and we have discussed this over the past two years.
Yeah, I believe this has come up before and uh, you went by address now, I think. Got away from that system, so.
Should our rules and regulations reflect this, or just?
Any further discussion on the motion? We'll take a roll call vote, Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Ms. Filbert?
Yes.
Ms. Strongly?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
No, I do not believe there's access.
Mr. Lucio?
Staining.
And I've said abstaining?
Yes, I am abstaining.
By chair votes, yes, so it's, um, five, one, one. Thank you, um.
Thank you.
Do, uh, Gail, do we need every planning board person to sign, or can I sign for?
No, you, you need, you need to sign the Mylar that is going forward to the registry of deeds and two copies of I hope Mr. Zagar has brought two copies of the updated Mylar, one for town clerk and one for the planning board file.
Xerox code, so.
Don't we usually get full plans for the?
Full, I think we made a full size.
Of the revised one? Gail, don't we want a full, full, two full-size copies?
Yes.
You have the magic pen?
Yes, I, I left the Sharpie.
Left me the pen. All right, why don't you drop them off and I'll sign everything all at once, let them know when they're available, and I will do that.
We can drop them off in the morning tomorrow.
Okay, I don't know how you get down to town. Sign as soon as I can.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, rules and regulations, um, so, speaking of Ms. Tenny and Jonathan Murray had comments on the regs for driveway entrances. And we, and Mary had comments on the entrance application. And I gave, um, at least on our Marion eyes to the DPW uh, for review. And I think they also reviewed your, so, so, you know, the DPW is on A here tonight, um. So, um, let's start first with the, um, this is on driveway openings. Let's start with, uh, Ms. Cheney, Ms. Creighton's, uh, documentation.
Can I ask where the DPW's comments are?
I sent them by email four days.
They were in red from Chuck Dan.
I can go over them, but I haven't, I have an email, but it took the application, it's not the
It's pretty, it's pretty I have it printed out here as well, okay. So, um, you have a summary? The work, you want to, um, we, we put the, um, comments from last meeting and we did our best to try to reflect them and wordsmith them, um, I think the substantive uh, changes, we put application requirements all in one place, we, well, we numbered everything with a section, we added section numbers. We added, um, app, we consolidated the application requirements into section three. We consolidated the review of applications into section four. And, um, is there a section five? We got this number.
Yes, uh, criteria, it's right here.
And criteria, section five, yeah, criteria, and then a, a decision is section six. Um, it is a little hard in the, um, without, I printed out for you or, or saved to a PDF or something, um. Without all attract, without accepting all track changes, so there's still a little formatting stuff that needs to happen, that's virtually impossible to do, um, until you accept all the changes. Um, I guess, do you want to, Laura, have any, uh, we also got Chuck's, um, comments, which we can go over.
Sure, I can walk through them, or we can take questions if there are questions, should I just walk through the highlights here?
Okay, so, um, so Sarah said there's a changes track document, and then there's a clean document. And the clean document still has the comments where, um, yes, town council was, uh, maybe a, um, an edit, suggested edit, and then um, I either flagged something for further discussion or said, accepted or however we treated it. So, starting from section one, purpose.
Uh, we have highlighted that, um, the date in twenty twenty-three is still to be determined. He requested that we updated, uh, pick a specific date here, we also included reference to the specific general bylaw section. Uh, and those are the substantive changes to section one. Uh, section two condensed existing and new residential and commercial development into one section, and, um, said that the DPW show review and approve all applications for driveway entrance. Section three, and we started, we, we deleted the word institutional from that, so it's existing and new residential and commercial development, section three. Start section two, section three, application requirements. We have a list of A through F here of criteria, which we, uh, collected from town council's comments, from previous discussions in the last meeting and from getting to, um, consistent. Um, consistent use of scales and so forth, so we have the application and the application fee listed, item A. Uh, section B refers to the overall plan and a scale of one inch equals one hundred for the general site plan. Section C is the detailed site plan and one inch equals forty, which deals with the actual proposed entrance and site features. Section D shows existing and proposed topography. Section E or sub subsection E. Shows that all features within fifty feet shall be included. And, um.
Can I just interrupt on that, on the, we, those, that list in D was in about three places?
Yes.
They were, uh, in three different places, so we consolidated them all and said the plan shall show features within fifty feet of the. Uh. Including that list, so, um.
That's right, and in some places it said forty, so we standardized it to fifty for a little more context. And then, uh, number F. We added if the site is in the Water Resource Protection District. The site plan must include a calculation of existing and proposed impervious square feet on the parcel. To illustrate zoning compliance for. We also noted that it had, if it had been subdivided, um, the approved subdivision plan should be submitted in lieu of an application, it's evidence prior approval. And that the application, now I'm on line forty-one, the application requirements may be waived by DPW. If they discern, determine that any of the application requirements are. Uh, not relevant. Then section four, reviewing the applications by DPW. Uh, they will conduct a site visit as part of the approvals process and, um, they shall review the. Review, uh, and approve or deny the permit of thirty days of submission. This is where, is this a good place for me to insert the comment from Chuck? We had a few comments, uh, questions for. Chuck Dam, and I'll just read the questions and his answers which are in this email. Of, uh, his response is in December eighth, Friday. Number one, should a site visit be required for every driveway application, the driveway, um, curb cut entrances was inconsistent and when it. When it talked about the timing of the site visit and how many? Uh, so his answer was, we will go to the site at the beginning for every. And again at the end. If it's a complex, uh, driveway entrance, maybe also during construction. This would be covered in the conditions given by the DPW. Our next question regarding the site visit, number two, when is the appropriate time to visit the site or does it depend on the site conditions? So at the DPW's discretion. Should the work completed work be inspected by the DPW in every case or could the town instead require that an affidavit be filed upon substantial completion of the work? And Chuck says that the DPW will check, uh, with final inspection as he already noted. And that the, um. Work has been completed according to the plans. Question three, is thirty days adequate for DPW to complete its review and approve or deny the permit? He said, yes, that's fine, and then the fourth one I'll get to, it's regarding the sketch, and so when we get to the sketch, I'll. Well, let's see, so that's, uh, gets us to section five. Well, section fifty-one, section, line fifty-one, just to continue, construction improvements cannot be initiated without approved permit, I think that was. No change from the previous language. Section five criteria for driveway entrances, we accepted the deletions, the town council, um. Uh, gave regarding. Uh, language that was not relevant to the actual driveway entrance. And, uh, so those are reflected here. Um, in section B. The number of curb cuts, the residential lots shall be limited to a single curb cut, that's what our general bylaws says and we're reflecting that here as well. So no exceptions to that for clarity, if. Comment that's great out here, but is, if the planning board elects at a future time to go back and update the general bylaws or recommend an update to the general bylaws. To allow a special permit for multiple. Uh, residential driveway entrances, then that could be, uh, considered in that review. Uh, with this addressed, this is as it was before, just incorporating some. Um, clarifications from the town council that were recommended by the town council and really just refer to. Both to the general bylaws, section forty-six C. And also to the sketch that's shown in the following diagram. We did ask Chuck, um, is the sketch still relevant, it shows dimensional requirements. It does explain, uh, more in more clarity about where you start the slope, so I think that's important to leave in for. Making clear that the accessible, um, nature of the sidewalk has to be maintained. So our question to Chuck was. Please review the sketch single with residential driveway standards. And confirm that it is still current and should be included. Chuck says the sketch is fine, but I might add note for illustrative purposes only, if that's an easy change to make. And we can, um, that's, that seems non-substantive and something that we could add. Uh, section D, no change, section E. Location, uh, let's see, we made some, um. Distance requirements were already updated by town council, we had accepted those. Um, we made the addition of inserting site elements that may hinder lines of sight. Uh, per previous comment in the planning board meetings. And so those were accepted and the deletions. Section. G, no change. Uh, materials, we deleted the, um, references to areas outside of the driveway entrance and we left in the use of. Curious materials encouraged in the drive, within driveway entrance so that it, uh, stays. I don't know, we accepted the deletion that was recommended. Section six is decision. Uh, and this clarifies the process, which is, um, in section six A. The Department of Public Works shall review the application, conduct a site visit. Uh, to inspect the location, determine if the application proposed entrance and driveway comply with the criteria described above and Chuck has confirmed that the DPW will perform that. Service. Change to section. B. Uh, section C, Department of Public Works must either approve the application with or without conditions. And Chuck noted the conditions which he would, um, add, which. Might pertain to a more. Uh, complicated driveway entrance, which he would go and review, uh, possibly a third time. Suggest modifications or deny the application. And the review period may be extended by mutual consent. And we deleted the, um. We deleted the clauses that were recommended to be deleted by the. Council. We also deleted, um. Reference to the town planner reviewing, that will be only the DPW. And then, let me catch up to my section here, in. Uh, completed work must be inspected by the DPW, that's section D, Chuck confirmed that that would be the case. Section E, if the application is denied or the property owner disagrees, then it goes to special permit. Uh, we had, um, an additional seventy-five dollars in here noted as the fee. However, we could flag that if we wanted to come, uh, conversation with the DPW about town administrator about the. Request or, or the requirement for an additional fee. Um, and that and the body of the document. Um, and then I, the rest of the changes are incorporated in the, um, application form that's on.
There's some, one thing I noticed we left out and that is in line, depending on seventy or seventy-one, um.
Okay.
We referenced the general bylaws, just should be article ten, section forty-six.
Oh, same. Forty-six, yeah, and the other.
On line six then. In the purpose?
Yeah, it's there, but we, in the, in line seventy, it's, we left out our, it's article ten.
Right, I'm saying in line six, it says article X.
X, that's.
Yeah, so sorry. I, I put that in as a placeholder, I thought that was a placeholder that I put in.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if that's article ten, okay, I think that's TBD.
Okay. And then the only other thing that redundant thing that I don't think we caught is art, is line fifty-two. And one sixteen are redundant. Uh, at least, I think yours might be off by a number, but construction of the improvements cannot be initiated without an approved permit in line fifty-two, one. And then it's the same in six D, where it cannot be initiated without approval. So I think we could just strike the. Sentence in.
Fifty-one?
In fifty-one or fifty-two, whichever. Yeah, in the construction of the inline fifty-one, uh, construction improvements cannot be initiated because it's redundant.
Yes.
And we are trying our best to remove redundance. So, I'm gonna.
So, uh, comment, um, on three M. It decided in the water protection district. Is that under the purview of the DPW or the building inspector? To determine, um. Impervious coverage.
Well.
Yes.
In the. Email that was posted today from town council. Um. They said that because it's clear that this is just curb cuts and not driveways, they said that that would go to the building inspector. Though I don't think we have a clear channel of that. That I don't know if the planning board discuss or somebody discusses, but there's nobody. In my opinion, clearly overseeing the driveway, the flow of water and off-street parking. If this is strictly. Be curb cut. So the short answer is, he said the building inspector, but I don't see the, the clear channel of. That being passed over.
Ms. Philbert?
I didn't see an email from town council today.
They posted it in SharePoint at like. Four o'clock or something, or?
Today?
Today, yeah.
I just, I.
The, the email has, if you don't mind, has answered three questions, the first is. The board should discuss and vote on adopting, amending the regulations in a public meeting, I do not think a public hearing is strictly required. Uh, as my understanding, the board's preference practice to hold public hearings, if that's the case, I recommend the board continue to follow practice. That's about whether we could change it without a public hearing, the second. Is, question was, the DPW has adopted a handful of curb cuts requests that are readily met the standards of the bylaw. Are these approvals valid even though we do not have formal regs from the. Planning board finalized, the applicants have gone ahead with constructing the curb cuts if necessary. Um, we could redo the process. And the response is, my opinion, DPW approvals are valid, not withstanding the lack of planning board regulations. As long as the DPW issued permits in accordance with the criteria found in article X. And section forty-six C, it's my further opinion, there's no need to redo the approvals. And then third, zoning has requirements for maximum lock coverage and amount of impervious surface. The curb cut process is just for entrances of the street and not the full driveway. How do we best manage compliance with the impervious surface area for driveways? And he answers. Yes, I'm gonna show you a yes or no question. The general bylaw curb. Cut process and permit is just for the entrance off the street, not the full driveway. While the building department is the ultimate authority on zoning requirements, including maximum lock coverage and previous surface area. I recommend that the DPW coordinate with the building department when it receives a new curb cut permit application to make sure all zoning requirements are satisfied. So.
So I would amend F to have that coordination.
Well, isn't it by, the, the building inspector is gonna get a copy of this. And so F seems to me to be a step toward that. Helping the building inspector to ensure compliance.
I think that's clear. And then I had just a minor comment on. Five G. Which would not spill into the roadway, I think we should use the word enter or something besides spill, it sounds like, uh, you know, milk kind of thing. That's just us.
You're crying over spilled milk.
Spill, I don't know.
What is it, five, oh gee. But wash, yeah, wash.
Or enter, I thought, but anyway.
I think the issue is if you have gravel. And the rain comes, then it washes into the road.
Right, any other comments from the board on the, Ms. Foley? Yes, it's on the, uh, proposed document.
Yes. So first I would do the revised date to whenever this was revised. Um. It would be sometime in November, I would think. Um. Um, let's see. So in, on lines, I guess, same questions kind of on thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, it says the DPW will review drainage of water onto a public way. Who is reviewing drainage for driveways? I think if we can determine that now, that'll help the process, um. Is that a building inspector? Task?
Question? Do we, do we have Nate on?
Uh, Nate and Chuck, yeah, they're on, either one.
Yep, we're on.
On that, uh, welcome. On the, um, the question on drainage from the driveways. Washing into the road.
For abiding properties.
I mean, I think generally you're supposed to, you know, a property is supposed to handle it within their own property. If there is drainage in the street that they can tie into. That's certainly preferred, but unfortunately not every street in town has, has drainage. So it's gonna be, you know, handling it in the least disruptive manner possible. Um, and that is definitely gonna vary from street to street and from even property to property on each street. Um, but in terms of general review on building permits, you know, I, Chuck, that's not something you do, is it? For drainage of, 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 uh, driveways. Um, you know, occasionally if it's under. A con, if we get asked to review for a concom, um, submittal, we will look at that, um, but that's not a standard thing we look at.
Yeah, to the extent that, uh, Paul asked us to look at it, so, you know, they had the first crack when it's a building permit. And if there's a civil plan that they want us to review, they ask us to review it, if they don't, then they don't. Um, so, and then I would say for the purposes of the curb cut, we do look at it. And if we think there's gonna be a problem, then we would, um, you know, say something or, you know, have a comment as such. And then work it out with either the homeowner or their engineer. And then I would say, and other area, you know, the, the other way I can see this becoming a problem is if something's not built to plan. Uh, you know, we would reserve the right to tell them that their, you know, property is draining onto the street and it's causing a nuisance and they need to correct it, so. It would just be an ongoing issue. But we, we look at it, I think is the point.
Further comments, Ms. Foley?
Um. I guess, so are we, so we're. Saying the DPW is handling the drainage, correct? Um. So as you get to, um, line twenty with A, B, C and forward, um. These aren't. All lining up with the application, so the application, for example, uh, for B. Says that it needs to be a registered engineer, architect, or landscaped architect, we don't say surveyor. So we either need to change this or the application. Um. And B and C seem to be redundant, I don't know if it's trying to say two different things.
So one is the overall. Bird's eye view and then one is the detailed plan.
So could we specify the. Which plan is which, because it just said a plan and then one is one inch equals a hundred feet and then.
It's showing the general site plan and then the other one is the detailed plan, so, I mean, we can specify that further, um.
I, I know, I see what you're saying now, it's at the end of the sentence, I, I just. I don't know, but if I would.
It could say a general site plan and then a detailed site plan.
Yeah, that just might be.
Yeah, be good.
Clear, yeah.
So instead of a plan.
B would say a general.
General plan and then C.
General site plan, yeah. And B would be a detailed.
So we currently have that it is a registered, um, engineer. So we currently have that it is a registered um, engineer, architect, or landscape architect. Are we changing that or?
I I don't think surveyor is germane to this. Um, Chuck, what do you think? I think we should strike surveyor out of that.
That's, I don't think a surveyor that wasn't an engineer would.
It'd been back in the day, but.
Okay, and can you add um, registered? Because that's how the application is. So a a registered engineer, architect, or landscaper.
Well, it says licensed by the Commonwealth. That assumes.
But we say both on the application.
Okay, we'll change it.
I didn't know where D came from. Did we have that on the prior?
We did not add anything. I think it was on.
Um, as you're looking at that, I'll just, so on the application, we have a lot of other items that. Aren't on here and I'm just. Hoping for consistency like on the application, we do address driveway width setbacks, length. A handful of others, so I'm. Not clear why we wouldn't have all the same requirements on the. Actual regulations as we do on the. Application.
Or vice versa, do we need them on that?
Just to address the first question Mary asked about the ten foot or three meter contour intervals. So on the track changes. There was one paragraph which um, we then broke into two. The board said the plan must show existing and proposed topography at ten foot or three meter contour intervals as well as locations of trees and. And so we, all that was. So we just broken it to two bullets.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, we can decide if we are. Which one we're being consistent on.
This is the eighth, Mary, that you're asking, or the plan shall show features. Is that the one you're at?
Yeah, so the items A through F, and I'm just saying on the application. Are other. Um, items that we don't have on here.
Zoning district, assessors map, lot number. I don't think that's on the. Application requirements.
You may make a comment wrong. Uh, yeah, I don't think.
When Sarah and I were pulling things out of. The body and putting them into one section, we flagged this as for discussion. Do we want these listed here or in the application form? So there might be some redundancy and we could decide as for. To put them in both places and align them, or do they belong really in one? And then perhaps the application, perhaps the more lengthy detail goes in the regulation. And then a kind of a checklist. Which could be a shorter version could go in the application form so that they align better, but we're not being redundant. We just certainly weren't looking at the application form at the time.
I also think that if it's not a bad idea to have the application have the zoning. Map on location, but I don't think it needs to be specified in the regulations. Could just be.
Oh, I agree with that. I'm just more on the actual detail of the curb cut, the. So on the application, and again, I. Don't feel that it's right because we say driveway and curb cut width. So on the application, we don't care about the driveway. We're just looking at the curb cut.
Could you just say where in the form that you're looking right now?
On the application?
Application form, are you looking at a particular? Page on that?
Um, it is the first page.
Oh, I see. Driveway and curb cut widths.
It's, I think that we're looking at, it's this fine line between curb cut and driveway. And we've been advised that this is a driveway entrance. And that's the subject of our. Jurisdiction. So if somebody wants to make a eight-foot wide opening. And then make their driveway, so the previous. Water supply district aside. Want to make a driveway that is fifty feet wide. I think that that is. Not sure where the entrance starts and stopped, but. Not our, I don't think we can. Dictate that.
So on the application, we should just strike the word driveway.
Yeah, I think we, well, I guess I would say we should have the same language. Or refer or a, I guess I would prefer say uh, C section. Whatever it is, three point O of the regulations for application requirements.
Instead of being specific, just refer back to the.
Refer to the application.
C C three point O.
Right, see, referred to the. Regulations or vice versa. Yeah, just tagging on to that, if the regulations have all the language that we want in it, then perhaps the form. Application forms could have a checkbox for. General site plan, detailed site plan.
Yeah.
And just reference back without going into more detail about what's in that and it all stays in.
Right, site features.
We don't have a double kind of like sort of the same, but not quite.
Agreed. I mean, so my point is either it needs to be consistent in both places or we have it mostly in one place and refer to.
So let's, I I agree, and I think it should be in the regulations three point O.
I think it could have a summary, like it could just have.
What's regulations?
Reg, so to say.
Application reg requirements.
Right, fee. General plan, detailed plan. Topography. Features within fifty feet and waters, water resource district. See section three point O of regulations.
Write those two lines.
So then on line forty one. We brushed over it last meeting, um, and it's still in here. We did not approve that the DPW would have. Leaving capability. Think that needs to be removed or we need to have a new vote on that. I mean, I assume I say how it was get the vote will go, but. That was not in. Um, any of our prior. Versions. So I'd make note of that. Line forty five, again, the, this says it goes to the town clerk. The application says it goes to DPW. So we just have to be consistent. Um, I think in my. Comments on the application, um, I know other towns DPWs. Do not take up curb cut applications in the winter months. I don't know what, if we have any policy like that. I don't know how long. A DPW permit. Last, you know, was it a year, two years, or you know, I don't know what it is. Um, I don't know. It's harder to go out in the winter months with snow to to approve a curb cut, so I don't know if they're putting any. Limit on it. So when we say. Um, yeah, so I don't know if that should be noted somewhere.
Let's just take a step back. Who who do these curb opening applications go to, Chuck? Do they go immediately to you or do you get them from the town clerk?
The ones that we've done since we've implemented this have gone to the town clerk. And then they were going to me and Betsy or Nate. And then, uh, you know, we would review them.
I think we decided that last time.
I think it makes sense that there's a central registry of where what's come in.
And there's money.
Yes, yeah.
So we just.
At some point, we don't have to discuss it tonight or at, you know, this level right now, but at some point, these should be going online with all the other permits, whether they're. DPW or building permits or whatever, but I'm I'm fine with it going to the town clerk for now.
So I think we would leave forty five the way it is. But. But on this um. On this winter time shutdown. Do you guys, um, I know we have in the past gone out and. Will be curb cuts. Regardless of season.
But just being new, I don't know how long DPW permits last.
Yes, that's two issues. One is, can, is there any restriction in time of year when applications would be? Stayed because of weather? That's the first question. The second question, which I think is a good one, is how long are the permits good for? The first one's for Nate, I guess, or for, I mean, Chuck.
Well, so I guess there's kind of two answers. One is that we always. You know, play the winter moratorium, you know, as it comes. So some years. There might not be a winter moratorium, some years. There would. I don't see a problem with anybody submitting an application year round. I think one of my conditions, which is what I do with my road opening permits. Is, you know, if we're in the winter time period, that we need to. You know, know when they're gonna go out and if there's any inclement weather, we tell them they're not allowed to. And that's generally, you know, an accepted condition by any contractor that's, you know, trying to do winter work. Um, so I I don't think I have a problem with it. One of the other things that we also is one of our conditions. If they're, uh, you know, opening sidewalk or something like that to, you know, for the purposes of their curb cut. We have them maintain the pavement for a for one year. So basically to get us through a winter season, whether it's. Before, during, or after they install their, you know, their the asphalt for that sidewalk. They own it for a year. So. I don't really think it's an issue, but I'm I'm fine with whatever you guys put in the. Put in the application.
The other question.
Of your, uh, how long do they have to get the work done?
I'll have to look back. I think our road opening permits are ninety days. But, you know, I don't think we've ever really. Had a problem one way or another where, you know, somebody was. You know. Doing work after it had expired without, you know, letting us know or, you know, some other instance, I guess. Think it ever really happens.
ZBA permits are for a year. I think. Two years.
Laura.
I'm just looking at the draft approval or sorry, um, application form. On page four and number. Uh, number eight, owner permitting shall maintain sidewalk and apron and address any issues for one year. So that addressed one of Chuck's comments about. Um, maintaining the sidewalk for a year. I was looking in here to see if there was anything about a one-year decision. So I thought I saw it before, but I'm not finding it right now.
Adam, but you have the the final things. I didn't want to hold you up.
I know, I have two, I have two extra copies though.
Of the plan?
Yep.
You just want to leave them here. And then I'll sign them and leave it down.
On the duration, maybe we can put in six D. Um. It says work cannot be initiated without approval of the DPW. With the issuance of permit from planning board, completed work month. Uh, how about work must be completed within. Uh, or permit is good for one year and then before the completed work must be inspected. Or the permit is good for one year.
So I think Chuck just said road openings are ninety days, though.
Yeah, but think about it, you're you're a homeowner. You're trying to get your. You know, your financing, your ninety days is very short. I mean, what's, what's going to change materially? On the. The site. That would, you know, in nine, in even a year, that's. Gonna change it. Approval of a driveway opening, right? I mean.
We've been given curb cuts for years. I haven't seen any issues, but go ahead.
I had a question, but I'll I'll wait till on the form, but let me wait till Mary said, because I think she had her comments.
We want to resolve, do we want to put a, just can we put that issue to bed, whether we want it for a year or we don't want to just leave it open-ended?
So I'm just trying to put my hand up. Because I'm just still driving. Sorry, guys. Well, my my comment on this one is. Um, I. So then what happens? Those competing. Properties, if there's a larger development, I'm just kind of throwing this out there. So what if something, what if the site conditions change? What if a new curb cut comes in? So I feel like leaving it open for an extended amount of time. Could play into conditions in the future could change. Correct? Like you could approve something and then someone else could approve something and it could be open for a year, but. Are we, are we collecting these changes if we have? Multiple. Things happening on, you know, adjacent properties. How how do we capture that?
Well, I think that one of my other standard conditions is to notify DPW forty-eight hours prior to mobilizing to do the work. So I, from DPW perspective, I don't see an issue with a year. I think we'll be able to manage the workload and, you know, I think anything. That's, you know, overly complicated is gonna get kicked to a special permit anyway. So this is really just trying to get, you know. Residential, you know, curb cuts. Kind of. You know, done quicker. So I don't. I don't see it as an issue. But whatever you guys want to do.
Yeah, same topic. Follow-on question for Chuck. If the, um, if you have a. If your condition says that it's winter conditions and you're putting off approval of the permit until you can see it, is there a similar condition on actual construction of the driveway entrance? So if it's, so you're not allowing for winter conditions or you're putting any kind of a window on that? That enter into your.
I I think what I'm, I think this answers the question, but what, so one of my other conditions is. They need to notify DPW forty-eight hours prior to mobilizing to do the work and that's my. Last chance to, you know, make sure that nothing has changed. So whether it's weather, whether it's, you know, the neighbor, whether it's some other permit. Um, so that gives me a chance to say you guys have to hold off. Or, you know, you can't do it that day. How about, you know, the following week? That happens quite often, actually, on road opening permits. So it usually. You know, I don't, it's it's not usually an issue.
Ron, may I just ask my follow-up technical question? So if you have a, if the. Asphalt is not being produced in the wintertime, you're not concerned about that. It's really that you just want the forty-eight hours notice.
Yeah, um, yeah, I mean, that would be their problem if there were, you know. I think. I'm sure there's something in there that gives me the, you know, if they're. Paving or whatever and they can't pave, then they need to leave the condition in a, you know, safe condition until they can get back to it, which also happens on. You know, emergency road opening permits. You know, they can, they can usually get asphalt. It's just more expensive and.
Yeah.
Not, not, it's not easy. Might have to go to. Uh, I think it's strike it, but either way, it can, it can be accomplished.
So I see a problem, which would be if you're building a new house and you get a driveway permit before you build the house. Could take a year and a half to build a house and you couldn't finish the drive. So I think it has to be some sort of a, it's gotta be some judgment as to. Whether it's on time.
You gotta put the driveway entrance in to get to build a house, right?
They use the old driveway or.
Okay.
All right, drive over the frontage all. So. For Chuck, yeah, but it does seem like a duration, sorry.
Continue.
Well, thanks.
How much more do you have?
Line sixty-two, number of curb cuts residential. So. I think in the prior, it was residential. So we either need a different. Regulations for commercial or we add commercial here. Um. You know, I, it also begs the question of the buying residential. You know, there is case law that has in, um, defined. Accessory dwelling units as commercial because they're both rental, so. I'm not, we're only having one curb cut anyway, but. Was commercial. Mistaken and not.
Good points. Um, let me just look up.
By the way, just, we keep saying the word curb cut. It should be driveway open. I would do a search and replace.
Yep.
Ron.
Laura.
Um, addressing Mary's question, line one twenty-two in the track changes documents. Uh, it said before residential lot shall typically be limited to a single curb cut and then went on to about exceptions to that. And so the change was to simply take out all of the qualifications to single curb cut. Residential was there before, commercial is not.
So are we adding?
You say driveway opening shall be limited to a single.
I'm looking at the general bylaw, which is what we're trying to mimic here. Right?
Yeah.
So we may, we may want to.
The by, the general bylaw says there may, there shall not be more than one apron and curb cut per residential lot. It is silent about any other.
Why don't we be silent and just say driveway opening shall be limited to a single?
Well, why don't we, why don't we leave it as residential?
Yeah, residential.
Yeah.
So I, I guess I would flag that we do not have a
Commercial.
Correct. So currently, I don't know that we have a mechanism to approve them if we don't have a bylaw.
Wouldn't it be the same mechanism?
The others are.
Uh, they may wanna go why? I don't know.
So.
That's a good, good question.
This is all, this applicability in the general bylaws, all new and relocated driveway entrances for all land uses. But the reg, but the one is specific to residential. So I think we leave it as one per, for residential and unspecific for non-residential, because that's consistent with the general bylaw, whether it's what we intended or what we want in the future. Seems, cause I think our part of the goal was to make this marry, marry the, uh, mimic the reflect the general bylaw.
Okay, continue.
I had a question that if this was matching the general bylaw, and I think it does with the, so it's just worded. Um, I guess it doesn't define, so it says, uh, on line sixty-five, it says the maximum width for a curb cut, which should be driveway entrance. For a single driveway is twelve feet, seventeen feet along the edge of the roadway pavement. Um, the bylaw just defined that that extra five feet is the flare, so I don't know if we need to add that here or not, but it just, to me, it read confusing, but um, cause it makes it seem like you could have a seventeen-foot curb cut in kind of paint.
You could say the same thing as the general bylaw, which reads the driveway width as it approaches, the driveway entrance shall be a minimum of eight feet and a maximum of twelve feet in width with a combined driveway flare area of five feet divided on either side of the driveway as needed.
Seventeen to twenty-three.
Divided evenly.
Well, to be clear, that can actually only happen with the drawing if it's a street with curving. If it's a street without curving.
Still seventeen.
Still seventeen, the flare's different. No, maybe not there.
Laura?
Just maybe for clarity, we could just strike that parentheses clause that you're questioning, cause I think explained in the sketch.
So I guess with all that, the, the one remaining thing is the waving capability, um.
Yeah, I think we can strike the waving capability. But is there any conditions where the DPW would waive the, you know, the regulations of it?
No, it's, it's not the regulations, it's, uh, waving the application requirements. So then.
We don't need a topo, for example.
Right. So I guess that's a question for Chuck. Are there some application requirements? I mean, everyone's, we've had people draw their own driveways on a flat simple
Land.
Plan. Otherwise, you have to hire a registered engineer and, and there's expense there and.
But that's, yeah, oh, that's what we require.
Right. I guess my question is for Chuck, whether you feel in your experience that sometimes a, a simple curb cut driveway entrance application could be done without you know, the, uh, general plan, the site plan, for example, and just the detailed plan.
Sure. Um, yeah, I think that it would be totally reasonable, and you know, I think that, um, you know, certainly if I think there's a problem, I will tell them that, you know, this is just way too complex of an area. I need the full, you know, the full site plan, or, you know, the, the detailed plan, or the, the overall plan, or if I know it's gonna be contentious for whatever reason, I would, you know, also ask them to just do that, and you know, generally, people come in, ask me if I'm gonna be reviewing it before they do anything. And so at that point, you know, I'll know their name, I'll know their address, I'll know if they have an engineer involved, if they don't have an engineer involved. And, you know, we can kind of make that determination as we go. Um, you know, I think at the end of the day, if it's, if it's not clear, I'm gonna tell them they need a special permit. And at that point, they're gonna decide, is it worth it to give me the detail I need, or is it worth it to go get the special permit, where they're gonna have to do all that stuff anyway? So I think it's gonna work itself out. Really, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be an issue, but uh, again, whatever you guys want.
It's Teddy.
I have one concern here about waiving an engineer for the proposed, in the detail plan. Um, if you're dependent on your, if you're homeowner, say, and you draw a sketch, and then you're dependent on your site contractor to build to those specifications, my concern is that, um, there might be a lack of understanding around the, what it means to make a M A B and ADA accessible sidewalk with the correct slopes and all that, because when I see anecdotally, in some places, it's just a hard slope down to the street. Do you think that you could, um, manage that?
Yeah, well, I mean, if, I think we're gonna have, if I think we're gonna run into those types of issues, then I would, I would certainly recommend there, you know, not waive that, you know, issue. Um, so again, I, you know, if you defer to mind and age judgment on those types of things, I think we'll be okay, but you know, if you wanna.
No, I, I think that waiving the requirements in sort of, we don't need to get too overly bureaucratic. Flatley Avenue, if you drive down there, it is flat. It is, there's an existing driveway entrance that might be reused for when they redevelop the site. And another one perhaps, you know, it seems to me, and they're gonna, in that case, they'll probably have an engineer plan anyway, but, but if you were the homeowner making a, um, second house lot for your mother-in-law, or whatever, um, that, that one is pretty flat and straight on. Um, so I think that that is an example of where we would waive it, not curb cuts and cross slopes and that kind of thing. So it seems to me that I, I just, I, and, and you're right, it was not in the other, and that's why it has, it's highlighted, that I added that as a discussion point. So that's why it went in there. And then we can come back to decide that, but let me give you two other things that, I think, clear up a couple of things. The general bylaw says a driveway entrance permit shall expire after two years after issuance. Uh, so I think the answer is two years, and, um, the other issue is all driveway entrances in existence prior to the adoption of this bylaw, so that would be June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Shall not require review. So I think that's the date that we use.
Say, can you say that second part again?
All driveway entrances in existence prior to the adoption of this bylaw shall not require review unless they're substantially modified or relocated. So that seems to me to be the date. Um, in, the town meeting date in the, um, in line ten. June, uh, fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. And then, um, we can add the two years into that. Uh, I think right, line one seventeen. Uh, permit is good for two years. I mean, it's helpful for an applicant to sort of see all of this in one place, I think.
Okay, so we made a lot of, are we done?
I think we have not decided collectively about the waiver. We've sort of voiced our opinions, we may wanna vote that, cause that is a new change, new additions to the draft.
Okay, let's, um, before we vote anything, I just wanna make sure we've captured all of Mary's comments on the main article. Regulation.
I think so, and I, you know, trust me, I'm not, um, done hope to do this, but I think per town council's comments. Um, I think if we were to change anything, like adding in the waving, we need to have a public hearing. And substitute.
So, yeah, we can talk about the public hearing, I think. If we're gonna do a public hearing, I'd like to do it on all of the changes we're gonna make, including the ones you may wanna bring up later today. But yes. Christina?
Um, yes, thanks, Ron. So I guess in the last meeting, we discussed um, order of development, and a lot of curb cuts are, have been the last on the list, and we had talked about putting any new development that the curb cut would be approved before the building permit was issued, and I haven't seen that in this document, so that was I know at least my comment, I believe Mary mentioned that, I don't see that. And then where the posting of the approved curb cuts are going to be located. I don't see that either, like notice.
Maybe we should.
Yeah, Chuck, when you approve a curb cut, where does that go? Is that filed somewhere with the town clerk, or is it available?
Yeah, I, I give it back to the town clerk. So that's my, and the end of my involvement, I guess. I mean, usually at that point, I'm you know, emailing directly with the homeowner, so I'll send them my decision anyway, but I give it to the town clerk.
And so it starts with the town clerk, and then it ends with the town clerk, so there is, I guess, some kind of record there, um. And Christina, what was your other, what was your other question?
So that really is not my que, that's not my point. Like, we need to post them, these are permits, right? So we issue permits, we have minutes. So Chuck doesn't have minutes, so we need to post these, like the building permits are issued, like we need to put them and have a process where these permits are publicly posted. That's my second point, and my first one is a lot of times a project will come to us and say, this is the only place that the curb cut can go. So we had talked about in several meetings that the curb cut needs to be prior to the building permit. And I don't see that discussed in this document.
That was town council said that, that we couldn't do that. If you look at the town council's comments, it was, um, and I asked the building, I went and talked to building inspector, and I said, you can't hold up a building permit for uh, you have to issue, he has to issue a building permit within fifteen days of its application.
I think the point was Yeah, that's getting the curb cut before going to ZBA, I think that was the So then the building permit needs to include a curb cut. I mean, it ca, it, we just can't be the last stop, or the DPW can't be the last stop. We need to fix this, and I thought we agreed on, we were going to try and fix that problem. As a board.
No, I didn't think.
Well, no, then we we need to go back to town council and ask them how to rectify what the problem is, because we do have a problem.
There.
Um, I think you are correct that we did want that sequence, but we were advised by council that you couldn't do that. And then building permits are, um, by state law, they're subject to the to state building codes, so the building permit process is state law. So I, I don't think we can affect that either, unfortunately, um. However, ha, at least we have the two processes talking to each other, cause we're having a copy of the driveway entrance application, um, go to the building inspector. So I, I share your concern. I think there, we've got some in town that are don't have a permit and they're built, but
me, that's. Where did town council say that? Is that in the document?
Track, uh, the track changes, may I? So this was, um, track changes line eighty-two, which used to begin existing residences, residences and commercial uses. Uh, town council, then there was a bunch of struck language about the issuance of a permit. And it's sequence with the, the curb cut. So town council said the planning board does not have the authority to restrict the authority of the building inspector to issues, issue certificates of occupancy or building permits under the building code. Furthermore, Article X, Section forty-six, driveway entrances of the general bylaw provides the penalty for failing to obtain a driveway entrance permit from the DPW slash planning board. It states failure to comply with this bylaw shall result in a fine of fifty dollars a day until the non-compliance is corrected or temporary allowances are granted by DPW. So that was in reference to building comments or C of O certificate of occupancy.
So Ron, can we ask town council if they, if, can we require the curb cut to be on the building permit application?
Was it a question when we had the earlier discussion related to the, um, ZBA variance and wanting to get ahead of that? As opposed to the building permit, or are we talking about both of them or? I sort of remembered a conversation around the variance from CBA.
We talked about both.
So is the town council weighed in on the ZBA process, the sequence there?
On the ZBA appeal process for?
No, getting a variance in the first place, if you're gonna need a curb cut for whatever the variance might be.
I don't know. On that answer, could have, uh, could get town council to weigh in on, uh, some kind of enforcement.
My question with that wasn't for variance, it was just the basic, you know, a lot of times people will go in front of the ZBA for a new build or addition or whatever, and max out the property, and then there's not a lot of room left for the curb cut driveway. And so this is just to ensure that there's safe access and enough space. So I don't know so much of variance, it was just the process that instead of going to the ZBA, getting all that, and then coming to the planning board, it's, you flip it, and you go curb cut first and then the ZBA. I mean, it, it could be for a variance, but usually it's just for a special permit. Or block coverage, or.
We wanna specify the order in which a curb, a driveway entrance is received, if, if someone's going to the ZBA for a house extension or something like that. Is that what we're talking about?
Or, or just the building permit. I don't think the building inspector is necessarily looking at these, right? So I think we just need to capture that the curb cut is not the last thing to be looked at.
Uh, I have a suggestion.
Chris?
I think we could require somebody who's asking for a building permit that's gonna require a new driveway entrance, submit the driveway entrance permit to the DPW at the same time. It's not, that's not telling the building inspectors anything, it's telling them the applicant to do something.
No, I think that's good. Any, anything, it's gonna be better than what we have, so absolutely. And I think Greg has his hand raised.
I'm not saying hand raising. Right?
Yeah, I was just trying to get clarification of what problem you're trying to solve. So the, it, it's the applicant can perhaps go either way, but they have to meet the standards regardless. So I'm just trying to understand the problem that is trying to be solved here.
I think the problem is the planning board has been pigeonholed into, there's only X, if someone's trying to redevelop a property, I guess the property that comes to mind is School Street and um, across Essex County, there was only one spot that the curb cut could go. So we didn't really have an option, there wasn't a lot of input to be put or had at that time, and this is not the first time that that's happened. So the site plans have been drawn, we've gone down construction plans, and the curb cut has been, only can go here at this point, so that's what we're trying to solve, and this has been an ongoing problem.
But at that location that has been presented to you as the only option, and you feel it is, does not meet the standards, then you deny it, and it's the applicant's problem. Then you deny it, and it's the applicant's problem. So if it, if it meets the standards, then it gets approved, if it doesn't, it gets denied, and the applicant has to go back to the drawing board. Uh, I'm just not understanding the problem.
Because the house has been situated, the house is determined, the house, it, it. I. We're pigeonholed, we don't have anything else to do, foundations have been poured. We're the last one to come to, so you, there isn't anything else to do, because the foundation is done, and we're asked for a curb cut, it's not on people's radar. No, we don't wanna be.
I'm repeating myself, you can deny it.
We wanna be part of the caution.
Ron, if I may.
Oh, yes, Ms. Jakes, our liaison, select one.
Hi, I just, um, my question is, are we, and I, I'm just confused a little bit, I thought we were talking about driveway cuts. But some people refer as curb cut, and I'm just. Could you just clarify what it is that's being discussed, please? Thank you.
Yeah, so for many years, it's been called curb cuts, and now we are calling it. Driveway entrances. This is the change. We're removing the word curb cut. Going forward.
So are they, are they interchangeable terms, or is there a distinct difference between the two? Thank you.
Yeah, there is.
Can I answer that?
Go ahead.
So probably three quarters of the driveway permits. Don't involve curbs, and they're, they're on roads that don't have curbs, so it's technically not correct to call them a curb cut. Uh, so that's why we went to a driveway entrance.
They are interchangeable.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, um. The other question, Greg, maybe for you, on this public posting of driveway approvals, is that something that's gonna cost, I mean, how does that work? Or is that something that's doable?
We could simply create a, a page on the website and just post all approved driveway permits. Driveway cuts, whatever we're calling them here, entrance, driveway entrance.
Highway entrances, okay.
That's a new. Why, for what purpose do we need to have an additional? Place on the website with the newness, that someone is going to have to have the responsibility to. Create and update, and, I mean, I, I guess I'm with Greg, what? Problem are we trying to solve?
Uh, Christina, your logic for, uh, having, oh, Sarah, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm able to raise my hand.
Sorry.
But all of the ZBA decisions are filed with the town clerk. And it seems to me if DPW files their decision with the town clerk, it's all in one place and everyone can see it. I don't think you need a separate website, thank you.
Ms. Foley.
So I think if the, um, and maybe Chuck said this at the beginning, I forget, so if they're using the curb cut application process. Link that is currently on the town website, just like they track the, um. Road openings and building permits and all that, they can just maintain the status of the. Driveway entrances in that same location, so people can know they can go to the. Um, those links, so perhaps that solves the problem of not needing a, a town page. But you can just track it within the application process.
So I actually beg to differ, Ron, and I'm having.
Go ahead.
So the ZBA, the ZBA actually has an agenda, and they have on their website and on their agenda what you're going to be talking about, whether it's going to approved, and then you can go back and look at whether that. You know, whether it was approved or not. We don't have that kind of procedures with. The DPW, so you can't follow along. So this is the concern, how do you follow along?
Greg.
So again, we. It's not that difficult to create a listing, goes to the clerk and those can be posted. I will note, however, that the only. Permits that the DPW is issuing are those that meet the standards. It's a by right. In essence, if it meets the standards, check off it's by right. So there really isn't, um. An issue as to, uh, an incorrectly issued permit. Uh, you know, someone wants to challenge that it, it didn't meet the standards. Then they can, they can monitor that. Um, but if there's a, a deviation from the standard, it goes to you for a special permit, and it follows the public hearing process. So again, I, I, the, the amount of, um, issues I think are minimal for standard plain vanilla. Driveway entrances that meet, that meet those standards that you have outlined, that get issued as by right.
So I, I actually would like a follow-up question that, if I may, Ron, how would someone monitor that?
Again, we can easily post them as a, as a listing of permits issued.
But I felt like I was getting pushback on that, so you were saying they were by right and they didn't need to be, so, and they need to be monitored, so I'm just curious how someone would monitor this.
I said from the very beginning, it would be easy to post, I don't think it's a necessity, because it's, it's. The only ones that get approved are those that meet the standards.
There.
Um. It seems to me that if the, uh, town administrator, town clerk and DPW want to put a list for the convenience of whomever. That's fine, but it doesn't belong in our regulations. And, um. I'm gonna use the same logic that Mary just used, and I'm gonna, even despite the fact that I think. The DPW should be able to waive the requirements, I'm gonna agree with Mary that that might trigger the requirement for an additional public hearing. And so at this point, until we decide to have a public hearing on that issue, because I'd love to get this done pretty much tonight with the final. Just vote of the final language next meeting without a public hearing. Withdraw the waiver, and this same issue, by the same logic, would be a, uh, expansion. Or, uh, you know, maybe people would have question, concerns about. Privacy or whatever else, um, and that, that too would trigger potentially a, another public hearing, so in this interest of simplicity. Of not having a public hearing to reissue, to clean up these regs and get them posted, I'm gonna suggest that we table both those issues, the waiver and. Any requirement of a public list, and certainly if Greg's team. Wants to do a public list for the convenience of, for whatever purpose they want. Fine, but I don't think we should require it. It's not, it's. So that's my, that's my opinion.
Any other comments from the, Christina?
Thank you, Ron, um, so the building inspector issues permits by rights, and he posts them, because people have the ability to appeal a building permit, so. We are in essence doing the same, so without. Notifying the public, the public doesn't have the same ability to do that, so. Convenience or whatever seems to be a bit dismissive. Because we're actually following along with what the building inspector is doing, and to not to mimic what he does in posting a notice. Seems to be that we're not following what our normal procedures are, so. By right, not by right, whatever it is, we need to notify the public of what's happening. In our communities. Plain and simple.
Uh, if it, if a driveway opening meets the criteria that our DPW says it does. What's the challenge?
Ron, there's lots of challenges, the building inspector's. Permits are challenged frequently. There's lots of challenges, that's the reason for notice.
Oh.
I think the, the point being made is that if, um. If anybody were wanting to appeal the. DPW permit. If it's never posted, they're never given that right, and if. In fairness, we should give people that right, if they have the right to appeal a building permit, they should have the right to appeal. A curb cut. And. I think that's the point being made.
Who would have standing, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Just reaching in on my patience on this point, who would have standing to appeal? A drive, if the DPW determined that met the standards, would have sta- standing other than an abutter who could appeal the building permit?
Are you asking?
So I see your point, I, um. But. I don't know. I don't know why you're gonna put neighbor, you know, people have property rights, something needs a standard, somebody wants to challenge it. Fine.
Ron.
Yes, Sarah.
I'm sorry, I can't raise my hand.
Okay.
The park, the curb cut regulations and parking regu- regulation moved to the general bylaws. And as such, ZBA no longer has. Jurisdiction over appeals. And therefore, uh, any appeals need to go to the court system. When they were in the bylaws, zoning bylaws, the ZBA had. Jurisdiction over appeals, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um. You know, I think what we wanna do is get. I think we discussed this long enough, um, I'd like to get, uh, a. A completed, refreshed document with all our changes for our next meeting next year. And so we can vote on the changes, um, and then move forward. With this, and put this to bed.
Okay.
Any, uh, objection to moving forward with that way? So I would ask, um, for volunteers to put together, uh, the changes we discussed.
I think Lauren, I don't know.
And then on the application, um. I think we're gonna refer back to this document. On the, on, on some of those items that we talked about. And then there's two applications, one is for special permit, and one is for the DPW, we should probably consolidate that to one. Um, I don't know if the board disagrees with that, it's the same, it's the same language in both.
Absolute.
Um, and, um. Anything else?
A question about combining those two applications, one's gonna be application for a special permit. So that's different from just an application of DPW.
Well, it's, when we went through them, it's the same, same, same words.
Okay, so the wording won't be the same, but.
I guess we could say at the top, is this an application for a DPW or a special permit, we might probably give that option as a blank, but, Mary.
Yeah, I think with the. The application and the criteria being the same, and then the path is different if you're paying, you know, a hundred dollar fee, a seventy-five dollar P- fee, and then the decision will clarify that it was either a DPW decision or a planning board decision. Um. And then with the application, I just wanted to clarify that. I'm gonna wait to revise it till we, till we have this finalized one, so we need to, okay, and then adopt the comments or not adopt the comments.
I think that makes sense, let's see what, we can refer back to your document.
I think we can get it back out to you, and then you can use, you can use the, the revised draft to revise the application, maybe we get it all done together.
We'll have a month, so should be plenty of time, so get it back on the, on the side and then.
I was just asking for a couple of points of clarification, so Sarah and I are working on the regs, and then we're gonna take the kind of, um. We're gonna take some of that material that belongs in the regs, out of the application form, so I can help that, put in the regs. And then the form is gonna be simplified, is that gonna be done by Mary and me, I mean, excuse me, by Sarah and me, or Mary and?
We'll, we'll wait for your document to hit, hit us, and then.
On the application.
Yeah, and then Mary and I will get together, if that's okay. Well, you know, we'll. Figure it out.
May I ask one more logistical question, there's some, um. Language in the application form that talks about decision and timeline. Does that wanna stay in the form, or does that wanna go in with decision? Section here.
As you said, that was, uh, regulated already in the, uh.
The timeline is regulated two years, but, um, the, the, the first draft that Betsy had done had a decision form. That said, uh, where the DPW checked off that there was a decision. Okay, I think that's the, that's what we're talking, that should remain, I think, and there needs to be a. A way for the DPW to easily file a decision. Maybe it just is on the application.
Yeah.
At the bottom of the application, it says decision, and then. Yeah, this was about the planning board being required to hold a public hearing for a special permit, it's really the special permit language, so that's gonna come out of. The. The means. Maybe put the decision at the bottom of the application, so it can be then.
Alright.
Okay, good, thank you.
Alright, thank you, um, thanks, Chuck and Nate, before you leave, I have some books I'll leave outside your door, I guess.
Sounds good, actually just one quick question, um, clarification for us. I think it's pretty clear that, uh, for residential, there's only one, uh. Driveway entrance allowed. Are two allowed by a special permit at this point?
Apparently not.
Okay. So we, we do have a question, or a resident asking right now to add a second, so I guess our direction to them is that at this point, a second curb cut is not. Is not allowed.
Well, we. Done that.
I think that's what town council.
That's what town council said, that's an unintended consequence.
Yep.
We might wanna change the bylaw.
April. I mean, I'm, I think it's a good guide.
Good point.
But there's, there are, there are certainly. Circumstances where you have a lower. Garage and an upper front door, you know, and off two streets. For example.
Alright, that's the future. Okay, um, the hour is late, did you wanna go over this special permit tonight, or?
Maybe we can take it at a high level, if you don't mind, um.
Plan review and hiring of consultants, line twenty-seven to five hundred.
So what I did, um, and I put it in the packet, and I'm hoping what we can do is. Maybe talk about a few of the things and do a similar quick process. I excerpted from that large document of regulations, those items that were related to, um. Special permit and the hiring of consultants. And I, I added, um. Line numbers, so, um. The track changes version, I, the deletions are not, permanent deletions are just deletions for the purposes of talking about site plan. And special site plan, um. Site land review and special permit. So, um, then I sort of went through and looked, um, at the comments from town council. Um, first of all, so that front matter was the, all of a business about board conduct, so that's what I, that was. Um, and then the back matter is all about, uh, subdivision rules, so those two, but in the middle is this, and then we have driveway entrances, so. But in the middle, there's the, um, business about sp- special permit and site plan review. And I think that there are a number of things that we can relatively quickly. Uh, it seems to me, agree, that town council made some good suggestions. And, um, the first is, he suggests that we strike all of the. Uh, requirements that are, um. Duplicative with those that are in zoning. So the regulations, as Betsy has proposed them. For site plan review and special permit, reiterate all of the stuff out of zoning, they just repeats it. And he says, why do you do that, we don't need to do that. And. I think when. I think we've all sort of said the same thing, that's in various ways and at various times, so my suggestion is that we.
So we know it's for sure repetitive, we're not deleting something that is, uh.
I think it is, uh, repetitive or, or, um, inconsistent.
Okay.
And that we should just refer to zoning. Or criteria, so that's the first one. Um, and if we can even agree on, on that, um. Um, and if we can even agree on, on that, um. And then most of the other sections are actually quite, um. Simple, you know, this has a conflict and that has a conflict, so my suggestion. Rather than going through this, maybe get out, get out a little early here, is, uh, I would be willing to work with one other person. Maybe Sue.
I'll do it.
Um, to go through a similar process that we went through for the driveway, but, um. Uh. But sort of make them concurrent, we will adopt the, uh, the town council's changes in a track change document, so you can see how we did it. And that we did it, there's less duplicative stuff, as the driveway entrances had so much duplication. But I think this section, as I went through it, it's not. As bad, or as, as, and I think, um, we can abstract it, and then we would have this process document. And the application, I would include the application for site plan review and special permit in this review. And come back for first read in January. With a track changes document from the one that we approved in June, cleaned up. With. Town council's comments, so then walk through it in that way. That's my proposal.
Alright, well, if you wanna do all that work, when do you think you might have something for us to review? Would it be for the next?
January seventh, no, maybe before the next meeting, or maybe not, maybe for the second meeting in January.
Sounds good to me, anybody object to that system? Foley. Sarah, go, Ms. Foley, Ms. Foley, can you, hold on, Sarah.
No problem.
So just to be clear, you're not accepting the track changes?
No.
Okay, and, uh.
Well, I would, I would just extract all the stuff in the beginning, so we'd have to look at it again, and like the, the board, I would just be look, we would just be working on the site plan review. And special permit section.
You're just plucking these seconds out from that.
Just like you didn't driveway.
I guess my, I mean, I have some issues with some of the, um. Expect, and my biggest issues are with the applications, um. Uh. Completely inconsistent.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And some places just wrong, and, um, and there's one that is baffling to me, and if I.
And the applications, I don't think town council reviewed.
I don't know.
They don't have any comments.
But there's a special permit application for uses or activities. And we've never had that.
Yeah.
So, like. And, and it. List the districts and it doesn't list District E, and it, yeah, so I, you know, there's, to me. There's a lot wrong in these sections, so I, yeah, I don't know how you wanna receive, um.
So you're going over the main body, but not the application?
If you've looked at the applications and wanna make a scan your comments and send them to us, I think that'd be great.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I mean, I feel like I kinda did that with the curb cuts and then. Never to be really be discussed again, we just got a new, um, version, so I. I seem to keep reading the same topics over and over and over, so. If, if we're gonna just stick with the body of it and then do the applications.
Why don't we stick with the body first and then do the applications, that's a good suggestion.
Alright, start with the body for January, and February for the apps, once we get the body done, we'll do the apps just like we're doing now, so. Sarah Melish?
Yes, I just wanted to give you a heads up, and I expect to deliver the ZBA decision this week. Which will then enable them to file with the planning board.
On CST.
Yes, CST, sorry.
We're gonna get to CST, okay, so they're gonna, yeah, they told us. Okay, thank you, Sarah, so, um, the next topic is, uh. Hiring consultants, you talked about that, okay, um.
Unless Greg has, um, any, any update on that.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's coming up, uh, first, let's get to the MBTA zoning, uh. Update from Chris and Sue on task force guiding principles. In proposing overlay districts, you have a handout for the.
I have a handout, uh, Christina, I'm sorry, I can email you. One of these.
Or I can put it in a folder for you downstairs.
Emailing would be great.
Okay, so, um, one of the things that task force and grappling with now is, how do we pick zoning districts? And so, uh, working with our consultant, we've come up with a, a bunch of criteria that we think should be used. As we evaluate different parts of the town, to see if they might be good fits for this new zoning. So I've listed nine of them here, we actually, when we did it, they were all kind of hodgepodge list them out of more than I. Uh, tried to organize them, so they makes more, more sense. So I'll go through them very quickly, the first is. That we want the districts to obviously comply with the MBTA Communities Act, because if they don't comply, we're just wasting our time. The second is, we want to protect and preserve town character and the commercial uses in the downtown. We wanna do that by preserving a variety of design characteristics. Preserving historic structures, including the use of a demolition delay by law. To protect and promote commercial uses, to protect existing multifamily properties. And to keep building height below four stories within a half mile radius of the town. That might change, but that's where we started off. The third criteria is, we want these changes to be acceptable to the voters at town meeting, because if we don't get the vote, we don't get. The districts created. The fourth is, we want to encourage housing development to meet town needs, and that includes. Affordable housing and to consider the, um, SHI as we do these districts. The next one is to improve current land uses, especially in underutilized areas or underutilized sites. We wanna promote the shoreline and waterfront as amenities, and we wanna make connections to the downtown. Number six is to minimize impacts on open space, water resource areas. And coastal areas threatened by flooding and sea level rise. Number seven is to minimize potential impact on town neighborhoods and residents. And we have a bunch of subcategories, one is to target large-scale development to appropriate sites and minimize large-scale projects. In existing residential neighborhoods. The second is to minimize the total number of additional units that are created or possible. The third is to consider appropriate sites beyond the one half mile radius. And the fourth is to consider infrastructure limits, water, sewer, electricity, traffic, and schools. Number five is to promote residential use above first floor commercial uses. And the last one is to, uh, create regulations that are at least disruptive to existing zoning bylaws. So I imagine we'll turn this into some sort of a scoring mechanism, so we can score each district and see how it. Complies with each of these criteria. And I wanna try to explain how, how we're gonna do this, because it's very tricky. So the, the state compliance model allows you to, to essentially draw a district. The, the model then will list all of the parcels within that district. And then we can start applying different, uh, variables to see how that affects the density within those districts. The variables that have an impact on density in the model are a mineral lot size. So if you have a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet, you're not getting as many units as, you had three thousand square feet. The second variable is the additional square foot of lot size for each additional unit. The third is the buildable area of a lot, that includes lot coverage and setbacks. Fourth is height restrictions. The fifth are the limit of total numbers of units that you're gonna have per lot. And number six are parking spaces required for each unit. Uh, I wanna point out that the number of specified parking spaces doesn't really affect us in Manchester so much because of our. Lot coverage requirements, but, um, it may have some impact as we get into this further. So the way the model works is, it assumes that every residential unit. Uh, has a footprint of a thousand square feet. And so a lot which could accommodate a thousand foot, uh, footprint, a thousand square foot footprint. With a three-story height limit would generate a capacity of three units. If the lot coverage requirement is forty percent, then the one thousand square foot footprint would need a lot size of twenty-five hundred square feet. Now, the current mineral lot size of the G district is six thousand square feet, which would be more than enough for six vehicles. Which would be eighteen hundred square feet, uh, and would end up using half of the lot. So those are the kinds of issues we're trying to deal with here as we do this. And one of the great things we can do, and Richard Smith is on the task force, is really, we can become a whiz at this. Is actually drawing the districts on a map, and then playing with these variables to see how much sense it can make. So, uh, we think that, you know, I was. Trying to think of what the analogy is for how we're going through this process right now, it's kind of like a big jigsaw puzzle. You get it all laid out on the table, it looks like you'll never get it done, but then you start working on the corners and. It starts coming together and suddenly, we hope, we'll start making a whole lot of sense. Um, and I know, Sue, do you wanna talk about the MIT presentation?
Um, before you go on, I just wanna make it clear that we did not vote on this list. This is just, we randomly made a list, and this is everything that was mentioned. Um, we have not voted on these being the guiding principles that everyone has agreed to.
And in fact, if you all as planning board members would like to add criteria, this is a great time to do it. You can just email them to the task force or to.
So we should write draft at the top of this.
Yeah, probably should write draft.
It should have.
Probably should be draft.
Um, the other thing, the MIT presentation, um, was fascinating, um. They simply went over one of their case studies, I mean, they used the. For their case study, they went over one of the districts that they, um, proposed, I think there were six. In total, so it'll be fascinating to get the report and see, you know, how. Uh, each of these six districts, um, comply with the statute. Uh, the one they chose for their case study, I don't know if anyone tuned in, um, was downtown. Um, turning Crosby's into a green space. And a, a stage development where Crosby's would then go to where the Rich Tails is. Temporarily, and just, there were six different phases that, it was, it was fascinating. Um, you know, an interesting perspective from, um, twenty and thirty-somethings on.
No budget.
On how, on how, uh, private developers would wanna, um. You know, develop the downtown, but anyway, uh, it was fascinating, and they really knew their data. Um, so we're really interested to, uh, get the report that has all the data crunched, because they. They did have some great ways of talking about, uh, the topography of the town, the demographics of the town. Um, and some of the other things that are important in, in choosing the districts.
Great.
Hey, thank you, excellent.
I had a question for the, uh, team here, um, this great list, and I'm interested in the variables of the parking spaces per unit. So if you think about the amount of real estate that parking minimums take up. You're using the illustration of almost half of the lot on the six thousand square foot lot, so that starts to really, um. Eat away at the fabric of this kind of densely developed, you know, downtown, historic downtown that we have. So I'm wondering if you'll be running scenarios that look like. Perhaps, um, reducing the minimums. Or even in certain districts not requiring the minimums, and considering where else you might provide parking that people walk to, or. You know, one car per, one car per unit rather than two, some of those other variables that don't. I mean, the ecological consequences of providing that much parking are pretty severe, and they are directly in conflict with the, um. You know, kind of coastal resiliency playing, or trying to minimize appropriate service and so forth.
So one of the things is interesting about the model is, it assumes a thousand square feet for any unit. Whether it's a three-bedroom or a studio, it's gonna be a thousand square feet on average. So, uh, we had a bunch of studios. That'd be one space per unit, and those, in, in reality, the score, the footprint would be much smaller than a thousand.
Well, and sometimes you don't have one space per unit, you have X, an X, you know, percent factor of the amount of units, so. I just would encourage the group to think creatively about parking, because this is transit-oriented development. And just making a minimum of one per unit, I think, should be looked at in terms of what the. Uh, amount of space that that, you know, um, requires.
Yeah. But one of the things we don't want is to have. A whole bunch of three-bedroom apartments with one parking space and spill over into the streets. So that's something just we have to.
Yeah, I think you have to make assumptions about what kind of person is gonna live in those units, and is every. Studio unit also gonna have a, be a person with a car, or again, is there an opportunity somewhere for, you know, a lot parking that you pay rent to, or. People live all kinds of different ways, and not every household is a two-family, two-car family, or even a, you know. Always a one-car family, depending on if it's seniors who wanna downsize, and there might be circumstances when you just don't want or need a car. On a daily basis.
I have a quick comment, um, should we be pushing for a demolition delay by law ahead of this?
Yes.
I know Rosemary Costello has started something with, uh, HDC.
Whether or not anything else happens in this town, we definitely need a demolition delay.
So would the board be wanting to take this up for April, for, you know, next, in the next coming months?
Yeah, you mean to follow up with her?
Yeah, so move forward with that.
Well, remember she came and talked to us and they were sort of working on it.
Yeah, and I don't know where that stands now, so I can follow up too.
Well, I guess it's not the topic, but, you know, I, a demolition delay is just a demolition delay, that's not preserving the historic buildings, so. I guess I would like to dig a little deeper about preserving historic buildings, um. Demolition delay doesn't do much.
So one of the things, to answer your question, that's a serious topic for the task force. What we were saying, well, maybe we shouldn't put a district where there are a lot of historic buildings. Because it puts them in jeopardy, so we should be looking at other places, it's just one of the. You know, some of these are conflicting, because we, it's gonna be a question of judging what's more important as we go through it.
So are you advocating for not pursuing a demolition delay by law?
No, I'm advocating to do that, but then go further, um, I.
Okay, but go on.
Yeah. Um, and then can I just ask one more question, so, uh, was the, did the MIT students, um. Was, was one of their overlays the Gordon College land? Um, no. No, I know that the task force has reached out to Gordon College, so I'm just wondering, um. You know, a, a suggestion I have for the planning board, which I've mentioned a handful of times, um, is that we pursue an offer for overlay. District protection, um, for that watershed area, um. And that would be the Gordon College land that. Abuts our wa- drinking water supply. To just, yeah. Well, maybe we could look at that as a.
Private.
Well, some of it's private, some of it's towns, some of it's, um. In Manchester, some of it's in Hamilton, um. And I know that. Chair of CONCOM had proposed that, and that, um. I think it's, it's something to, that we should look closely at. As a board in a town.
Yeah, well, Steve Gang sent me a letter about it, um, months ago, and I asked him if he wanted to come in and speak, I never heard back.
Oh, okay.
They went to the select board with that proposal, I don't know where it went there, but.
He, yeah, the select board didn't go for it.
Christina?
Oh, thanks, Ron, um, so I just wanted to backtrack a bit on the parking requirements, so I think we just need to make sure that. I know that Manchester is being tagged as a transit-oriented develop, um, development or whatever, but. I know that Manchester is being tagged as a transit oriented develop, um, development or whatever, but, but I think it's. Pretty obvious. There's not a whole lot you can do from Manchester without a car. So. I would like to make sure that we're incorporating the assessors about how many. Multi-unit dwellings, how many cars are registered in single family, multifamily? And make sure that we're actually using real data to make our predictions. On what we need for the forthcoming potential overlay districts. This, this avail, this data should be available, correct?
Which data, um, data cars?
Yes, how many cars are registered per unit? If it's a single family unit, multifamily unit, yes, this data is available. And we shouldn't presume what is used. We should use real data.
How would determining what is currently being used help us in this process?
Because it's real data. If there's one or two cars that are registered for a one bedroom or two bedroom or three bedroom. That's what our community needs to service themselves.
Suppose you could get excise tax data and by address, I might. And, and just cross, cross reference it. It might be a little hard, but.
Yeah, I mean, she's provided data to me in the past of how many cars and I think it. It's in the database per what address, so it's pretty easy to extrapolate that out.
I mean, it's an interesting idea.
Okay, thanks, uh, Chris and Sue, um, Greg. Could you, uh, give us, oh, sorry, no. So, yeah, self signaling technologies. Uh, consultant list, we had the site visit on Saturday, played pretty well. I think we can expect an application as Sarah told us in January. Um, Greg, where do we stand on the consultant list?
So we continue to, um, um, collect potential names and, and have some preliminary conversations to see who might be interested. So we'll continue to, to refine that and, and, um, I'm assuming that. You know, once we have an application, um, then the board can sit down and, and. And make some selections from the list of consultants that we've identified.
So, quick question on the process. When we get the application, do we immediately, um. Have a, a public hearing, open a public hearing?
Well, you can, um, you know, discuss with the applicant sort of the timing. And if you want to initiate, you know, an initial hearing that gives the broad parameters. And have the applicant present sort of broad overview and, and highlights of the proposal. Um, you can certainly do that. And then at that point, um, you can have them present. Their various studies that you would like, um, your, the peer reviewers to, to analyze on your behalf.
All right, thank you. Um, any questions on self signaling? Um, town planner update, uh, Greg, could you give the board, um?
I'm sorry, Ron. Do we have, I'm sorry, Ron, do we have a shortlist? Other people that have said yes, other people that have said no.
Do we have a what?
So we're, we continue to work on that. So we were going to present that once we have the, have, have gotten. At least, uh, you know, we're looking for multiple options for each discipline. So give you a couple, three choices in each discipline.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could you give us an update on Mark on Town Planner Research?
Yeah, yeah, very pleased to, um, announce that we're moving forward with hiring, uh, Mark Resnick. He is, um, a very experienced, um, planner, has worked in a number of communities in the state. Most recently coming, um, from the town of Lakeville on the South Shore. Um, and Mark can start, uh, for us, uh, the middle of, of January, January sixteenth is, um, targeted for his first day. And again, um, Mark has had a lot of experience with, um, an array of projects and. And planning challenges, um, has been a, been a professional planner for most of his career. Um, and I think will, will service well. Um, I appreciate, uh, Ron and Mary's, uh, assistance and, and interviewing, uh, and Harrison did as well. And, um, able to move forward with his, with his hiring. So, um, it, it has taken a while, but I think we're. We're about to have the success and have, uh, get that across the finish line here.
What's his last name?
Resnick.
Yes, N I C K. Too bad he can't come to our meeting on January eighth, you know, work out a deal.
He'll be in transition, uh, I'll see what he can do.
All right. Thank you, Greg. Um, just finishing up here, uh, on our liaisons. Uh, senior housing bylaw, uh, Sarah, Mary, or Chris, any update?
Did not he, because we were working other things. I had to go to Boston and everything else. So we need to reschedule in January.
Sticking with you, the Harbor Management Plan Advisory Group, any action?
We have a meeting Monday night coming up to, um. The net, the, the consultant Urban Harbors has suggested that, um, getting input on the harbor. Is one of the first steps. Um, we're going to talk about how to do that. And, um, I think they often have a public meeting. Um, I think we're going to talk about that or potentially, uh, directed meetings with the many stakeholders. In the harbor, I, I personally think might be more productive for a first meeting before we have some data, um. And, and then we get, then they get a real in-depth understanding of how the harbor is used and. What people see as the challenges or the opportunities, um. But we're going to talk about, that's the topic, um, on Monday. It's a Zoom meeting. Um, I do, uh, buy on is going to be away and I do need to check with our committee to make sure we have, going to have a call. Given the, given the season, but that the current plan is Monday night at six.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Uh, CPC met, uh, last week, uh, going over the applications for this year. Um, we'll be meeting again to, um, either move them forward or deny on January eleventh. Their next meeting. Any other liaison reports? Sure.
School district, uh, the school district's, um. Business and financial manager, Avi Urbis, who has been with the district since two thousand and nine. Has moved on, um, very sad, but, um. Uh, I guess they have some good candidates to replace him, so. Doesn't affect planning per se, but he has been a rock.
Okay, thank you. Um, approval of minutes, uh, decent, uh, I'll take up. October thirtieth first. Any discussion?
Are those the, um.
That would be the one on the.
The, for the.
Town meeting, the ones where we just said yea or nay to the articles, is that the one?
No, 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 because the town meeting was, I haven't written those.
I thought Gail wrote those. Uh, what, how the planning board voted on each article, like what I read that.
That was a special meeting, ten thirty. That's what you did.
Yeah, you're talking about the meeting that we had.
And actually, I need to write those because I took minutes on that. November thirteenth minutes, that's me. I haven't done them.
So we have a motion to, uh, approve the ten thirty minutes. All those in favor, hand raised, be good. Anybody against?
I just didn't see those, I'm abstaining.
And then the next one, Gail, November twenty seventh. Anybody read them? Anybody have a motion? If I have a comment?
Motion to approve the.
Motion to approve seconded, any discussion? Show of hands for approval. Like three, four, five, Christina, you're approving? She's on mute. Hey, um, any other items to discuss?
So I think I need.
Christina, go ahead.
Please note me as, as, um, I'm standing.
Stay, okay. Sarah, you had some item?
Um, well, it's going backwards a little bit, just, um, I would like to ask permission to, um. Accept the changes that we, for in this driveway entrance thing, to accept the changes that we did. We discussed tonight and then use a clean track changes to reflect. The edits that were made on what we proposed tonight so that we're, um, so we can fix the formatting and deal with that. So everybody's okay with that. The, um, material that we had tonight remains in tonight's packet. But, um, if we can just accept those changes that we agreed on. And then, um, make a new track changes version. I think it will be easier to follow. Is that okay?
Uh, motion to accept the, uh, changes.
I don't think we need to vote it because some of them we didn't accept and that kind of thing, but just as an, as a direction and people are okay with that.
Okay, by me.
Yes.
Any objections?
I don't know what we accepted, except that was my only question.
Well, they'll be.
Well, we'll do both. I, we can try to do both. I just.
So before we adjourn, just.
Make it clear.
Yeah, I think you've got tacit approval. Um, so next meeting is next year, so I want to wish everybody happy holidays. Coming with your families and friends. Just wanted to mention it's January eighth and then, um. If anyone's interested on January ninth, CPTC is having a little, um. Seminar on adopting and revising rules and regulations of boards.
Are you giving the seminar?
And then lastly, I got a, uh, message today from the town clerk that, uh, they've asked me to. Write the annual town report for the annual town report, which is. Something I've been writing, you know, since I've been chair and I know last time everybody wanted to see it. So if you want, I will take a stab at writing a draft and then distribute it for everyone to look at, if that's. What everyone wants, otherwise I can just pass it through.
I trust you.
I wait just, I'm just. I think I would suggest you draft it and put it in the packet if anybody has any objections, they can.
That's what I'll do. I'll draft it and put it in the packet for January. I should have it done by then. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Any objection? All of those in favor? Thank you all.
Always, yes.
Happy holidays.
Let me take this actually.
Yeah.